I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Do a little call here, turn on the quorum, council Bumgarner here, Ferguson.
Here.
Evers here, Howard here, I'm here, we're all here. We have a quorum, we'll start the meeting. Follow me into order. Uh, first piece of business here is the public forum. This is the time when members of the uh, the public are invited to come in and address uh, council. Uh, if you come and address council, we ask that you state your name for the meeting minutes. And uh, your uh, speaking time will be limited to three minutes. If there's any unfinished business or more discovery that needs to happen, uh, we can always uh, direct staff to follow up on any issues. So if you're here to uh, bring any issues in front of the council, now's your time. Not seeing any movement out there, so uh, we'll close down the public forum here. Begin the regular meeting with the setting of the agenda. Um, we've all had a good chance to see the agenda. Um, if anybody has anything on the consent agenda, they would like to have pulled out and put into a discussion item, now would be the time to make that move. Not seeing any action there, so I'll call for motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Some.
Sorry. Uh, motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Evers to set the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Agenda carries as written, we'll move right on to a mayoral proclamation, if you all bear with me, I'm gonna remove all the whereas's except for the first one. Whereas, the law enforcement officers of Olivia play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in our community. And it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazard, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and profits, protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And the men and women of the Olivia Police Department and all law enforcement agencies in Ranville County unceasingly provide a vital public service. And National Peace Officers Memorial Day is on May fifteenth, that was designated by President Kennedy in sixty-two and by Congress as a day to honor peace officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, as well as to recognize and pay tribute to the continuing service of law enforcement officers in our communities. And it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers past and present, and remember those who have fallen in the line of duty. Now therefore, uh, I, John Ogden, Mayor of Bolivia, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Peace Officers Memorial Day and that same week to be police week. Um, wanna uh, just uh, communicate a very, very large message of gratitude on behalf of the community to our uh, police department. We know that they work very hard to keep our um, community safe and clean, and we totally appreciate that. Alright, move down to the consent agenda here. It includes the. Makaya. We just had somebody from the community come in for public forum. Is this something we can rewind?
Yes, Mayor, I believe it is your discretion if you would like to go back to the public forum item um, to uh, to allow for a public forum comment if you so choose as, as the director of, director of this meeting.
Alright, thank you. Um, we do have somebody here from the public wishing to uh, address council. Uh, you can come up and address council here. Um, we ask that you state your name for the meeting record. Your time will be limited to three minutes, but any unsolved business after that, we can uh, you know, going to further discovery offline and, and resolve what we can resolve, so thank you.
Okay, Betsy Hannah, I would've been here on time, but I couldn't figure out which start to come in. Had to go all over.
You can sit if you want, Betsy.
Oh.
You can get comfortable, then we can see you on the screen a little bit better.
Okay. Um. Okay, so.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could inter- in- interrupt, and Elizabeth, I apologize. I, I believe, I believe this is appropriate, but it might be best practice to have a motion made um, to move back to agenda item number three. I apologize about the timing of my interruption.
That's a good call. Uh, I'll call for a motion to move back to a public forum.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Howard, seconded by Evers to um, move back to the public forum here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alright, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, good day on my way home. We have Big City Welcome to Olivia and Corn Capital Days and all that kind of stuff. And there was something extra on it today, and I'm wondering if the city put that up. Or did somebody walk around and?
I find it pretty hard to believe that the city would put that up, Betsy.
So do I. But um.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great way.
That's fair, Elizabeth, isn't it?
Um, I'll sort of review our sign code, but yeah, I mean, the city did not put anything like this um, on the sign. Um, so we can definitely look at getting it removed.
Which, which sign?
The one on seventy-one by Cross Calvary.
Sorry, when you emailed about it, you emailed like right before the meeting about it, and I was like, are you wanting to put this sign up? Like, it was very unclear about what a sign looks like. It's like, that's definitely not allowed on city property. So I was unaware that it had already been attached, so um, thank you for letting us know.
Do you have any idea if it's glued on or screwed on, or?
Uh, it's either screwed or nailed on. Okay.
Is that, is that the only one that you noticed? It's just that one?
Yeah, cuz it's by my house, and I didn't go around and look at the other signs, and it wasn't there yesterday.
Did you get to see it? You wanna show the chief just so?
Yes.
No.
Well, Chief, I know uh, I know you're sensitive to language, so.
Yeah. We've had another one of these somewhere else, cuz, okay.
What do you notice, Chris?
I didn't see him in the side of town, west side of town. I go through, just a little bit, alright, so.
I have a little plaque here, not awesome.
We'll go, we'll.
Yeah, it's only about this big.
Okay.
So it'll blend in with the other signs that are there already.
There was nothing else on that sign.
Oh.
Except, welcome to Olivia, Corn Capital Days.
We appreciate the heads up, man.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Alright, I appreciate everybody's flexibility here. One more down to the consent agenda here. It contains the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-one. Uh, we have Resolution forty-one approving a step movement for Leah Peterson. Resolution forty-two hiring seasonal workers for Public Works Park Department. Resolution four forty-three authorizing a claimant to Owen Bumgarner as City Hall intern. Resolution forty-four establishing a local board of appeal and equalization. Resolution forty-five approving armory rental agreement template and delegating authority to city administrator to execute agreements and template form. We have the Armory Rules and Regulations. We have the Marcus Construction Pay Application Number Seven. And we have April dispersments. I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Uh, motion's been made by Evers.
Sorry.
Seconded by Bumgarner to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, consent agenda carries as written. Moving down to discussion items. Alright, so we have a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five-three. This is uh, this is the ordinance that we're gonna be using to amend sections of chapter one fifty-two of the municipal code to add mini warehouses as a permitted use in I-one and I-two districts. So if anybody is here, oh, pardon me, uh, we'll receive some staff reports on this before we move into public comment portion.
Thanks. Um, so this ordinance has been recommended by staff. It's supported by the EDA. It's been reviewed by the Planning Commission to amend chapter one fifty-two of our city code to add mini warehouses as a permitted principal use in both the I-one, which is light manufacturing industrial district, as well as I-two, which is the heavy manufacturing and industrial district. So mini warehouse is actually already defined in one fifty-two dot oh one four as a structure containing separate storage spaces of bearing sizes leased or rented on an individual basis. Um, it does go on to prohibit storage of hazardous combustible materials and flammable liquids and gases, so safety is, safety is um, accounted for there. Um, the mini warehouse use aligns with the I-one district. It's focused on low-impact manufacturing warehousing. Um, they provide small-scale storage without intensive industrial activity. It also already aligns with the I-two district. Um, so it complements existing warehouse operations while adhering to our safety standards. So it, and the amendment aligns with the city's economic development goals, but we maintain the compatibility with those industrial uses. So it's our recommendation to, again, the definition is already there, we're just adding it into those industrial uses.
Any questions about mini warehouses in the industrial one and two districts?
We didn't discuss it last EDA meeting, and everybody was on board with the change.
What precipitated the change, or the need for it?
We have somebody interested in developing a parcel in I-one.
Okay.
Um, for with a mini warehouse project, um, but it's currently not a permitted use or a conditional use. We are looking at possibly rezoning, however, a complete rezone doesn't completely, doesn't really align with our comprehensive plan.
Hmm.
Um, and so it was under our attorney's recommendation to look at adding in the use.
Got it.
Good question. Any other good questions, or that ones, either?
There's no stupid questions.
Respect. Okay, well, uh, we appreciate the report on that, Elizabeth. Uh, right now, we'll reach out to the, the public to uh, receive their comments. If anybody is here today to express any sort of comment on the idea of having mini warehouses added into the I-one or I-two districts, we would invite you to come up and address council at this time. Not seeing any movement out there, so uh, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting with an action item. In front of us, we have an ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three, amending certain sections of chapter one fifty-two of the municipal code to add mini warehouses as a permitted principal use in the I-one and I-two districts. I would really entertain a motion to approve that.
Some.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Bumgarner to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the ordinance oh three passes. Thank you, everybody. Alright, we're moving now down into uh, discussion item C. This is. A conversation about our twenty twenty-five seal coat projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just here to talk about the twenty twenty-five seal coat project. Um, Todd, you haven't been through the seal coat process with us before, so I thought it would be a good idea to come and discuss. So the city of Bolivia has a maintenance plan for all the city streets to just go through um, a seal coating process to just make the roads last a little bit longer. Um, just give some extra uh, gravel and additional protection, um, like I said, just get some rain out of it. This year for the twenty twenty-five was supposed to be Dupuy Avenue and the north and south option streets, um, between Highway two twelve and Fairview Avenue. With Dupuy Avenue having just been reconstructed, it was discussed of putting replay down in that street. Um, it's something that the city of Bolivia has been doing on a few other streets as well. It's just another option um, to get more out of the streets, just gives that extra protective coating. Replay is different than seal coating. It's a soybean process or soybean material. I will say, if you haven't been around or through that process before, it does have a bit of an odor, but so does seal coating, so you can take it whichever way you want. Um, but in that discussion with Craig, um, it was decided that Dupuy Avenue and the streets that were done as part of that project would be done with replay versus seal coating. You can do replay for, I believe it's three.
Three.
Three applications, and then you would go back to seal coating. So that being said, we discussed which streets would want, which streets would need or should be considered for seal coating. Uh, yes, okay, so the map that's showing chose the street that would be the, the, our part of the seal coat project, so again, we have Ninth Street, so the block north of Dupuy Avenue and south of Dupuy Avenue. We also have Eighth Street, north and south of Dup- Dupuy Avenue. Seventh Street, the block south of Dupuy Avenue, excuse me, and Sixth Street, north and south of Dupuy Avenue, a block in each direction. And then we also discussed with Craig any other streets that either industrial or other residential streets that might be considered. And it was discussed to add Fairview Avenue, um, I guess by the cemetery that's, that's on the west side of town. And then also the discussion was to add Gulf Avenue and, I'm always gonna say this wrong, Baylin, Baywin, thank you, Baylin Street. Um, and then we also added Twenty-Sixth Street and a portion of Walnut Avenue um, onto the seal coat project. Um, this project was under the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars threshold, so we just solicited to um, make, or I'm sorry, to contractors that have done seal coating for this area and others in the past, and we received four, um. Oh, man, thank you.
Yep.
We're close. And they're from MR Paving, Pearson Brothers, and Asphalt Surface Technologies, and Allied Blacktop Company. Um, of those four, MR Paving was the low bidder at fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. MR Paving has done the seal coat in Olivia for the past few years, I do believe. Um, we have no reason to object to them being awarded the project as a low bidder. Um, Pearson Brother, Pearson Brothers bid was in at fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Um, Asphalt Surface Technologies was fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty-two, and then Allied Blacktop Company was sixty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. So this would be based on the map that is showing for the streets that are highlighted in green, um, and then they also um, in the bid, were asked to have it, we did outside of Corn Capital Days. We don't typically give them an exact date of when it has to be done. They tell us when they had fitted in their schedule. It's kind of usually the middle of the summer, but we tell them that it can't work during Corn Capital Days. Um, and then we just kind of work between city and the contractor when it works for them. That's what I have on that question.
Is this soy-based product, I don't remember that that lasts a bit longer than the conventional? Is that still true?
It doesn't necessarily, the soy-based process or material isn't necessarily last longer, but it keeps you from having to do the seal coat. So you do the soy-based or the soybean-based, and you can do that for, so, three applications, so that would get you about five, fifteen-ish, ten, fifteen years, depending on how many years in between you apply that. Um, the way the soybean application works, it more, it soaks into the asphalt, but then it can only penetrate so far. And then if you put more on top of it, it's just gonna sit on top and it's not gonna penetrate into the asphalt. The seal coat puts a coating over the top of it so that the water can't penetrate into the asphalt.
Hmm.
Um, so then, I mean, you could say that by adding the replay, you're prolonging having to do the seal coat, but that, depending on the traffic of the street, I mean, Dupuy Avenue doesn't have, it's not a truck route, so it doesn't have a lot of truck traffic. So it could potentially um, lengthen the lifetime of the road by that ten to fifteen years of doing that. It'll, but it typically is just keeping you from having to do that seal coat. So it keeps the smoother surface of the road. The seal coat will add that rough surface.
Now, was it, there was an advantage to this soybean base stuff, if I recall?
It's a much lighter budget, I don't know.
Is it? Yeah, okay.
It is.
Okay.
And then there's also the, it's more eco-friendly than the asphalt or than the seal coat is.
Alright, so it basically is less expensive and works, has about the same effect.
Correct.
Yeah. And we can't put it over top of old seal coat, yeah?
Correct. So once you seal coat it with the, the two minutes of emulsion, you cannot do the replay, cuz that, that seal coat creates a barrier, so nothing can go into the asphalt where the replay soaks into it.
And so moving forward, we're gonna do an whole replay?
Um, that is the discussion that we have, that we have had with Craig, is that any of the new streets, um, the trail also has had replay on it, phase one. Um, had replay put on it, and then there's some other streets south, from south side of town, have replay also. Um, but yeah, so I think that's a direction that Craig would like to go with that, is that any new streets would have replay for those three applications, and that would go to the seal.
Good.
Unless, it obviously needs seal coating.
Correct. I mean, typically with a new street, you would hope that in those ten to fifteen years, you would not need to go back to set, but yeah. Um, and then like you said, anything that's been seal coated already cannot be, you cannot use a replay on it. And there is only one contractor that does the replay, so that's why you don't do a solicitation or anything like that. It's, you go to that one person and they do it. So I think Craig's already reached out.
I believe so.
Yep, Bergen is the contractor that does it? Did you have a question?
Seventh and Ninth Street, correct me if I'm wrong, are both truck routes?
Seventh and, yeah, they are truck routes, yep.
Okay, so is this gonna be advantageous for us to spend this money right now while we've got that school project going on and they're beating crap out of that road? What, and, and how is this project going to affect the traffic to that school project? Being the fact that that's two of your truck routes that you're gonna shut down on any given day to do this project, or for an extended period?
It's not an extended period of time. They typically will come in and they'll put the emulsion down, which is the sticky part of it, and then they put the gravel down, and they can drive on it that same day. So it's just while they're applica- while they're putting down the application that they can't drive on it. Um, you are correct with being truck routes that, you know, but that is also a reason to do it, is because they are truck routes, is that you have those trucks that are on there, so you want to protect that asphalt that's underneath it.
But they're the cuts twenty-two right now.
You are.
You wanna protect it, but at the same time, even, I mean, you're gonna have trucks that are gonna be trying to get through there while these guys are putting this product down.
Yep.
So now you're going to be either diverting them onto non-truck route streets to get them to the school project, or we're going to be.
Or you do one.
But wouldn't they be doing Seventh Street and then Ninth Street, it wouldn't be doing them all at the same time?
Yeah, they won't do, they won't ha- have the streets, they won't have all these streets closed at all at the same time. It'll just be while they're currently on that block. Um, I do see your point though, but I, I guess I haven't had an issue with it being in the past with them blocking a truck route. Um, with there being the construction, I can also make it a note to them to say, hey, there is school, school construction, so you can't have Seventh and Ninth Street closed while you're doing the work at the same time, and that's something that they're very accommodating on, but.
I'm, I see this when I'm delivering the mail and these guys are out there. They'll go spray one street and then go to the next street and spray that second street while they're waiting for the first one that they sprayed to be ready to put the stone down.
Hmm.
So we've gotta keep that in mind with, with the mess that we've got going out there right now. We can't create another mess.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, I don't think it, I, like I said, I can mention to the contractor, but I do think it's a benefit to do it now. I know you do have truck traffic, but you also don't want it to break up and then try to fix it, so you're gonna wanna put it down now for that, but. But it is something that I'll mention to the contractor.
And Kendra's usually very good at letting the city know when they're coming in town. We can pass that message on to the school as well, and their site superintendent to give them the notification of what, which of their routes might be impacted. If you guys would like to move forward, if you'd like a motion.
You'd like a motion?
No, second.
Motion's been made by Bumgarner, seconded by Ferguson to move forward with the seal coating plan as recommended by Kendra. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming by.
Yeah, like Elizabeth said, once I have a better date for when the contractor will be in town, what you guys know, typically they'll give us the middle of, of July, and then when July first comes around, I'll follow up and see if they have a better date, so.
And I'll let you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the uh, the talking block is the first reading of the ordinance four. That's amending a chapter ninety-two of the city code regarding nuisances. You guys recall, over the past couple of months here, we've identified that um, some adjustments to be made to the uh, nuisance ordinance and um, Elizabeth and the teams, along with the legal team, came up with uh, um, I guess an amended uh, ordinance regarding, regarding these nuisances. If you can, why has through those changes, Elizabeth, that'd be great.
Yeah, so this stems from our workshop on nuisances that we hosted last month, last month. Um, and so this is actually something that you have seen before. This was the recommendage, the recommended code change proposed in the memo, in the nuisance memo about enforcement. So again, we wanna make sure that all city staff are working collaboratively together to abate nuisances, which is how I think our code was intended. Um, however, it's written that it was currently written that abatement was really only one area, but abatement can mean a lot of different things in a lot of different areas. So um, we sat down, so it was a group, myself, chief, um, Christie, planning and zoning, Marissa, Public Works, Craig. We all sat down and came up with a step-by-step process as well as a very easy fillable form, which I've included in your packet. And so this is kind of the last bit that, of a suggested improvement that we are recommending um, for council's consideration. Um, so you can see kind of where our process is. We have started implementing the notice and order form that I included in your packet. Um, and so far, we've had good feedback on it from our residents. And so um, if there, after our discussion, we have a first reading of the ordinance and a second reading. So if council approves this ordinance tonight, well, you won't really approve it, but if you have no changes, then we'll do a second reading on the consent agenda for our next.
Let's start with discussion. Anybody uh, anybody have any any adjustments they, they need to see on the?
And for you to notice, here's the, by the way, here's the form. If it slowly loads, it'll slowly load at some point, but hopefully you saw, when you saw your packets.
Yeah, it looked pretty good.
Um, it's a much easier, this has gone through fifty different alterations, I wanna say. Um, just trying to get the fillable form right and making sure that we can easily do it so that when we get something with the photos, we can fill it out and kind of mail it off in the same day to really in a more timely manner, address those nuisance properties. We have had good feedback. Um, we weren't previously including photos, but the recommendation is that we do include photos that are taken from the public property or the public right-of-way Makaya, public photos um, to include in this notice and order form so that the resident can see exactly what we're talking about. And it doesn't wanna go, so. We'll go back to the city. Any questions?
Uh, for any feedback on uh, on the proposed amendment? Okay.
Thanks. We've put a lot of staff thought into this, so I think we have a much clearer process on how to address this moving forward.
So is the, the direction of council to move this forward to the second meeting, as is?
Yes.
Alright.
Cool. Thanks, everybody. You're leaving before Canada?
No, this is.
I mean.
Okay, so we're gonna have a conversation now about the county cannabis ordinance, so I, you know, we take a look at we've, we've talked about this issue a little bit, right, as a council?
Yeah.
But uh, so we take a look at what our intentions are with the cannabis situation, and with the county's intentions are with the can- cannabis situation. And uh, you know, we've decided to, to move a lot of these licensing um, duties off to the county. And we're kind of hearing that the county and the city are not totally aligned on how they want cannabis business to, to happen in the county, so that's why it's now, they're discussing it.
Yeah, and to kind of build off of what um, Mayor was saying is that so the county wants to restrict the number of retail registrations to two in this draft ordinance. That would be two private retail organizations that would not put a limit on the number of municipal dispensaries. Municipal dispensaries cannot be limited. Um, I don't know who at this time in Ranville County, which city, is seriously considering opening a municipal dispensary, just I, I don't see a lot of people willing to undertake it at this time. There's a lot of costs, there's a lot of legwork that needs to be done. Um, the other area where there is the most um, discussion happening is in the draft ordinance. When we were reviewing it, we saw that they are saying absolutely no temporary cannabis events. And if you recall, we had a full meeting about where we as a city would permit temporary cannabis events. Um, I asked, um, could you have her team to review it? Um, so it is of her opinion that temporary events are actually under an entirely different state statute section. So our ordinance, which was twenty twenty-four oh nine, um, it only delegates authority for issuing registrations of retail businesses and temporary cannabis events, in her, in her review of the material, looks at having it be a completely different registration system, similar to how the city would issue a temporary liquor license for a, an event. Um, and so if that's her opinion, it would be up to this council, and she's shared her opinion with the county attorney whose office was involved in drafting this cannabis ordinance as well. Um, it's up to you as a council, the county is having their public. Um, it's up to you as a council, the county is having their public meeting on this ordinance next week. And it's up to you all to see if you want me, if any of you are also available to go to that public hearing and voice any concerns. Um, what our options are, particularly for temporary cannabis events, is you know, if you're comfortable with her interpretation, we could acknowledge it, and then the event organizer might have to figure it out with the county, or we can take the more firm stance with the county and say, w- we can have these events, this is completely separate um, from your registration of retail operations, and we can kind of start drawing that line in the sand if that's what we wanna feel comfortable until they issue us a different opinion back. So that kind of opens the discussion up, um, but I know this council was very said a lot of, we don't need to limit this private business, we wanna see any business grow in Olivia. Um, no pun intended, but it works. Um, so it's kind of up to you all on what you'd like. Um, what you think about the county's draft ordinance and then what you would like my message, or you're welcome to join me at that public hearing if you'd like um, to be to the county.
In general, I don't wanna cede our authority to the county.
Right.
I agree. Because once, once we give up our authority on one thing, where does it end?
Right, well, I just, in principle, I'm against it.
And I, I fully do not support the limiting it at all. I'm very opposed to that.
You should not be limiting any businesses in this county. We're struggling in the way it is.
Yeah, you know, this is basically the same things that, you know, we've, we've said over time and and now was this news that these kind of events were going to be not permitted in the county, it means cooperate to begin, ring before council here and just make sure that this is something that we wanna go talk about.
So my question then is, how do we push back with this? Do we? Because we have said that we were going to give the county the authority, or we were going to step back and let the county figure out how they were gonna go about licensing.
So we only delegated authority to issue registrations of retail business. And so similar to, we have delegated to the um county authority to register tobacco business as well. So we don't issue those tobacco licenses for people to sell cigarettes, whatever, so this was something similar. Um, again, our legal interpretation is that temporary events, which the county ordinance is trying to claim that they get that authority over, our interpretation is, no, you don't have that authority under this Minnesota statute. And we have brought that to their county attorney, saying, where do you think you get this authority? Essentially, please tell us where you think this authority of yours comes from, because our interpretation is, no, you don't have that authority. Um, we're currently waiting to hear back on um, that discussion. So that discussion happened with the county attorney, I wanna say, on Thursday.
So we just decide this, it sounds like we don't want to allow the county to dictate to us what we can do in this matter. And so we just, we just say that and we wait then?
Yeah, I mean, what I can do is, um, I mean, I I'm happy to go to the public forum for this ordinance to express our concerns. One can be, if I'm hearing correctly, one is that they're limiting the number of registrations, given the just overall, unfortunately, decline of the county population. We would like to see more investment in the county in whatever way, shape or form that may come in. Um, including this business opportunity, I can also mention publicly, you know, we've had the discussion with the county attorney, depending upon if she gets back to us before the public hearing, but I can also mention that we as the city have only relegated this authority to you. We believe that we have the authority to still host these temporary cannabis events. It's public forums, so similar to when people come to a public hearing with you, we won't expect any answer back. Obviously, there won't be a discussion or dialogue engaged, but we can certainly show, I can certainly show up to voice those concerns to the full um, county commission.
Is there been any um, discussion with Greg Snow? He's our.
Um, he was at county convening when we first raised these concerns. Um, we can certainly raise the concern again with Greg Snow, letting him know, like, we've looked into this further, these are our concerns.
Just wonder what the aperture is of the commissioners.
And and you're saying that they are keeping the number to two?
Yes.
Is that two in the entire county, or is that two per city?
That is two in the entire county.
It's actually written on there, one for twelve thousand five hundred.
And I think because they're just over twelve thousand, that's why they got to the two.
Yes, there's only fourteen thousand people in this county.
Yeah.
The city way to say we don't want it.
Yeah, so it sounds like if somebody wants to get in on this project, they better be the first ones.
Yeah.
Because there might not be a chance to be the second or third.
And there's also, um, I mean, the other way is if, for whatever reason, somebody wants to invest in a business in Franklin, and somebody wants to invest in a cannabis business in Sacred Heart, those are the two for the county. Even if we have somebody interested coming to Olivia to say, hey, I wanna open this business here, we would have to say no.
We don't have any say over that, right? County gets to run that, so.
Yeah.
If this passes, you know, is certain.
But I mean, that's where we could, again, show up the public forum and vote, voice our concern.
It's the thirteenth?
Yes.
Um, you know.
Um, I believe their meeting starts at eight thirty. I do not yet know when it will be placed on the agenda. But I will sure, certainly share that information um, once we have it. We were encouraged when um, we brought up these concerns directly at the county convening, where we kind of had the first look at this. Um, John and I both voiced the concerns in the county convening room, um, and they encouraged us to come and voice our concerns at public forum. There were a number of city administrators who seemed to put the date on their calendar.
I think the county wants to work with the, with our, you know, us city partners. I just think we need to communicate what our what our reasoning is behind this and and uh I think they'll hear us out. Okay, I think we have clear direction on that.
Yes, thank you.
Let's move down to the report section. Are there any reports from staff today?
We have a couple of of report from staff, so um, as you all know, but I wanna state it publicly, um, the city closed on Chrysler Friday, April twenty-fifth. Um, we have received the check, it's in the account, so that is very exciting. Um, a city hall project, our concrete has been poured today. Um, there are a lot of inspections that will be happening on Wednesday. We are waiting on the gas company for some hookups um, to the south, and then the asphalt can go in. Um, you'll see in your packets, you did receive a memo in the staff notice section, so the American Public Power Association Conference is held June eighth through eleventh this year. Um, as MMPA board and alternate members, myself and our utility account manager, Jody Gilberts, will be in attendance at that conference. Um, I really enjoyed going and I thought it was really insane to learn about a lot of different topics last year, so excited to go again this year. Um, and also as just a report on armory activity, we, we have begun to receive a decent amount of interest in reserving armory spaces. So we're working on that. We did hold a test run birthday party through there. Um, they paid all the fees and everything like that. Um, but it was a good, it was somebody we knew, so they could offer us some good feedback, and that way if something went wrong, they weren't gonna be really upset. They knew they were the guinea pig, and they said hosting a nine-year-old's birthday party in the gym went really, really well, so it was a nice option for them, so.
Any other feedback that's constructive?
Um, yeah, so we realized a couple of gaps in our process on filling out the forms, making sure we had the right um, code in our billing process on how to pay via credit card or check or cash. Um, we developed how are we holding the security deposit? So some good feedback on just some procedural things on our end to make it a smooth process. So, we're excited.
Have you received any communications yet as far as there are some for lack of better terms, I'm going to say elderly card players in the community that are um, concerned about this space and and being able to utilize this, are there weekly playing?
Yeah.
Now, we've, we've got different things set up and, you know, different rate schedules and stuff that are set up. Did we talk about or address a, 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 a minimum or?
Yep.
Something of that sort?
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars a room for an hour.
Okay.
So they're very welcome to you that.
They have played when they were in the, when the old community center was here, they were part of that. They've been bounced around multiple times since.
Yeah.
Trying to find some place and it's, it's been a concern that's been brought to me multiple times.
Well, and I'm hoping that this summer, um, we do have a city hall intern proportions at the summer, so part of their responsibility will actually be we're figuring out how to put them at the armory to over, to offer some open gym hours. Um, again, for a fee or open room hours for those card players to come in, pay their hourly fee directly to the city. Um, they can utilize the space, especially with um, the lack of summer rec programming happening in our city. Um, if we're able to provide a couple of staffing hours at the armory, we'd like to do so. So please drive them um, our way.
I invite them here regularly.
Excellent. Well, they can just show up in the lobby and we can walk them through the process as well.
One of them though, today that we would be talking about it tonight.
Right.
They could stop down and see our wonderful city administrator again.
That's a little. That's all I have.
Any other reports from staff?
Getting a dodgeball team together.
All right.
We're gonna play against you guys in the new gymnasium.
Not fun, not bad.
Obviously, this is by our own, so.
Right.
I think it's taking so ugly.
Uh, we're gonna play against the council.
Yeah.
George is ready.
That's a woogie, really. No retaliation, that's all.
More than a uniform, so. I don't know what we're gonna be wearing, but it's something.
Church versus kids. Any reports from council?
I haven't had any. So the pool meeting um, went up the other night. It was some minor frustrations that were aired um, with the lack of community rec going on. There seemed to be a breakdown in communication between um, the pool being able to use different programs to be able to advertise as well as get the um, payments taken care of for the programs that the pool needs to use. Um, and I just voiced a concern at that meeting that if we have a program that is in our school district, that is able to be used by a community project, the taxpayers pay for the school, the taxpayers pay for the city side of the pool. It should not be a contest as to who's in charge and who's arguing over you can't play with my toys unless you play the way I want you. This should be a the, a venture that we go into together, that if we've got anything that either side can use to make it better for the entire community, that that's the way that we should move forward. So we're hoping that that conversation will be had and any any advertising or communication parts from the school side can be used on our side as well to benefit the entire community.
And the kind of.
Joint powers, yeah.
To further elaborate, you're specifically um, concerned about the online registration system, so currently you're not able to register online for swimming lessons. Um, there was a previous program when the city, when the school was still doing their summer rec program that had an online registration system. When the YMCA came in, that online registration system would lapse because YMCA was taking over that. Um, now with YMCA out of the picture, um, the concerns were raised by counselor Howard that we needed that system back. Um, the school has started looking into what a system like that would cost again. I've been in conversations with Mr. Menton about what that looks like, because the school's budget is obviously coming up much faster than ours. So we wanna make sure if we're bringing back an online registration system, which we all wanted to see, um, that they could include so in this upcoming budget year.
Thank you for your advocacy. Any other uh, reports from council? We had our county convening, obviously cannabis was a hot topic. Um, and some of the county parks will be getting a considerable facelift, skull beckon, um, specifically, probably if and when they grant. Um. We already talked about some of the things happening in, in uh, planning and zoning and EDA with the, with the many warehouses. Everything, uh, that's everything I can touch on. Any other reports from council? Okay, with no further business on the agenda, oh.
Notices and communications.
We have uh, noticed.
I have two that aren't on there. So first off, park bathrooms are open. We are above the freezing line, so park bathrooms are officially open. Um, yeah, electronics recycling is at the Bird Island Fairgrounds, May seventh, and then that also leads us to uh, we are hosting a city cleanup day, May thirtieth through thirty-first. This is our first year in, I'm, what I'm assuming is a while. Um, the city is uni- utilizing some light funds to sponsor dumpsters that residents can utilize for free if they bring their items to the public works garage. We, um, they can use those dumpsters to get rid of unnecessary items in their yards and their houses and their garages. Um, and Public Works will be manning it May thirtieth and thirty-first. More information will come about what items we are and are not accepting. Um, Public Works will be checking licenses to make sure that it is Olivia residents doing the dumping and not anybody outside of the jurisdiction. Um, and so we're excited to try this new initiative with our residents and see what the kind of take is. So we'll report back after that, um, but we're hopeful that this helps. Um, we're gonna go around identifying some properties who we think should really be taking advantage of this service and give them a nice little nudge to take advantage.
Did you know?
Okay. It's a free, though, right?
Yeah.
Offering you a free dumpster if you wanna come.
May thirty and thirty-first?
Uh, May thirtieth and thirty-first, the Friday and Saturday. So we were trying to do a nice neighborly thing.
Do you by chance, no, that's a great idea. Um, do you by chance know uh, if there's like a fee list for the pickup at the one?
So pickup, I can reach out to West Central Sanitation. You can always schedule a curbside pickup if you wanna drag your stuff out to the curb, but West Central Sanitation will issue a fee for that curbside pickup onto your statement. If you bring it to the public works garage with our dumpsters and it's on the approved list of things we'll take, there will be no fee associated with your pickup.
How many dumpsters are you getting?
A lot.
Uh, and is the approved list out?
Not yet. We're still finalizing that with West Central Sanitation and Public Works. Right now, it looks like we will not be accepting tires. And we will not be accepting appliances, but if you do have appliances, the electronics uh, fair if they plug in, check them, they take a lot of appliances. So we're excited to see how this goes. And this was at the full initiative of Public Works. Public Works brought this to us, said, hey, what do you think about offering this for the residents, so really excited about the initiative that's coming out of that department. They're taking a lot of pride in the city um, in the city parks and the city trails, and they wanna make sure everyone looks nice, which is nice. So, kudos to that team for coming up with this idea.
Awesome. Did you say there were a couple other?
That was it.
Okay.
That was it. I let up to city cleanup day.
Other communications when with the armory, there is a lot of questions out there.
Okay.
Do we have something?
We have a website already, like there's a page on our website about the armory.
Okay.
I can put together an FAQ list.
Can we possibly do something in like the shopper to give folks, because that there are a considerable amount of folks in this community that don't computer.
Sure.
So.
You can, I can write my next article about it.
Yes.
Sure.
But, well, and then that was a concern because not a lot of people get the paper, or not everybody gets the paper, but everybody gets the shopper. Every address gets the shopper. So if we could somehow get the information out
Right.
that way, it would be beneficial, I think.
And put a little one light around the utility bill, saying, hey.
And we can do that as well.
We have a community center, come in, let's.
Yeah.
Ask Jasmine for details.
An open house would be appropriate after a few months.
Yeah.
I'm hoping to do an open house of both city hall and the Armory and Derry Corn Council daily.
Beautiful.
To help with that as well.
And then have the
Case will be at both.
Have the, you have the available information for your FAQs and whatnot available then.
Yeah.
There, there's.
Doing people through your house.
Folks that are really interested there.
Sure.
And do the great now, let's. Right now, it's, it's conversation at the dining.
Yeah.
One more piece of communication, we have the groundbreaking for the uh, the memorial, the veterans memorial at Kubash Park, that was on. Friday afternoon, I think.
I went by there at five oh five and no one was there.
Thursday afternoon.
It was Thursday.
Yeah.
May first.
I just seen a thing for May twenty-sixth on Facebook. That'll be the official dedication, that's uh, Memorial Day after the Memorial Day celebration. But uh, they're gonna be pouring concrete tomorrow, so they're moving very fast, so. We're excited to see that come. Materialize, any other notices and communications? Nothing else on the agenda, I'll call for a motion to adjourn, motion. The motions been made by Howard, seconded by Evers to adjourn, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing out, all in favor say aye.
Right, aye.
Any opposed, we're adjourned, thank you everybody.
Thank you.